All right, it's five thirty. It's time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Commissioners, have you had a chance to look at the agenda? Do you have any amendments or changes?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
I've reviewed the agenda and have no modifications.
All right, then. I make a motion that we adopt the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item two, executive session, executive session, excuse me. We will, I make a motion for an executive session. I move that we recess for an executive session concerning confidential data relating to financial affairs and/or trade secrets of a company pursuant to the exception found at KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B four. And this will be for twenty-five minutes. And the meeting will resume at...
Five to six.
Six, or excuse me, five fifty...
Six.
Fifty-six, okay. And do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
In the executive session will be Chuck Code, Lacy, David, myself, the city attorney, and the commissioner.
All right. Three commissioners, David, Kelly, Chuck Code, Lacy, and the attorney, Jeff Chubb. All right. Okay, the meeting, we are back in session. And I would like to make a motion to extend the executive session for another ten minutes. And we will resume at six oh seven. Do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. All right, I got six oh seven. The meeting is called back into session. There was no action taken. Moving along, item number three, appointments. And first, we have the Electrical Board. We have two expired terms. And I would like to reappoint Dennis Royer as the Evergy representative, and he is eligible for retirement. Can I add Joe Long also? And we do this all individually?
You usually do them one at a time.
Okay. So I would like to appoint Dennis Royer as the Evergy representative, and he is eligible for reappointment. All in favor of that signify by saying aye. I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Next appointment, we had one application, and that is Joe Long. I would like to appoint him to serve on the Electrical Board. And do I have? And he will be his first term, and it will expire on April first of 2024. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Next is the Independence Farmers and Makers Market. There is one vacancy. I would like to appoint April Nutt on the Independence Farmers and Makers Market. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. I would like to affirm Main Street's appointment of Tabitha Snodgrass to the Independence Farmers and Makers Market. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. I would like to affirm Chamber of Commerce appointment of Lisa Wilson to the Independence Farmers and Makers Market. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. And those terms will end for all of, for those appointees will be June first of 2025. Okay. Okay, let me get this to work. I'm having just a little bit of computer problem. Here we go. Next will be the Independence Historic Preservation Resource Commission. And there were two resignations. And I move to appoint J.D. Cox to the Independence Historical Preservation Resource Commission to fill an unexpired term ending January first of 2022. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. And I move to appoint Mary Kathleen Babcock to the Independence Historic Preservation and Resource Commission to fill an unexpired term ending January first of 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Library Board of Trustees, there are two expired terms. I would like to reappoint Tom Sewell to a second term. And that term will expire on May first of 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. And then I would like to appoint Bill Kelly to the first term on the Library Board of Trustees expiring on May first of 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, and... Bear with me here. My computer is not... Come on, come on. Tree Board, I'm going to read it off the screen. There are three terms that expire on June first of twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one. There is one eligible for reappointment. And we have received one application.
That's the one that we have opened several times, and we haven't had any applications. And I think I sent you some information to reappoint the three terms that had expired since we've had no interest.
Okay.
And the one that applied was somebody that was already on it.
Okay, hang on, let me, I'm having trouble getting that to scroll up.
I can read it for you if you would like.
Oh, I finally got it to work, okay. It's a little slow today. Okay. I move to reappoint Michelle Anderson to a fourth term on the Tree Board expiring on June first of 2023. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. I move to reappoint Bob Brewster to a second term on the Tree Board expiring on June first of 2023. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. And I move to reappoint Leslie Fox to a fourth term on the Tree Board expiring on June first of 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Now, moving on to the consent agenda. Gentlemen, have you had a chance to look at the consent agenda? And do you have any modifications to that? Are we good?
I have none.
I have none.
So do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. All right, moving along, item five. This is the presentation of the Citizen Engagement Survey Results. Mackey, are you there?
Hi, yes, can you hear me all right?
Oh, we can hear you fine. How are you today?
Good, good, how are you doing? It's great to hear from you.
Yo, good.
Mackey, could you share your screen?
Yep, I can share my screen. I also have Jason Knabel, who is, was our, is our head of data analysis here at Tanner, who is helping us with analyzing the survey results as well. Let me get this going. Can you, one sec. Did you see it all right on your end?
Looks like it's loading, Mackey. Okay, now it's up.
Yeah, it's working.
Yeah, it's...
Perfect. We'll, what we'll do is, we're going to first cover who responded to the survey, what sample size we're dealing with, the high-level overview of the general scores that you received in various service areas, and then also an in-depth analysis of each theme and topic with some recommendations coming at the end, as well as time for Q and A. We're going to try and get through these sections a little quick just so we can get to the Q and A, and then we'll have additional time to dive deeper if you don't, on additional topics as well. So thanks so much, and I'm going to, Jason, did you take it over on this part?
See if I can control it from here. Yeah, so I'm just going to walk you through, you know, what the response looked like. You know, as far as demographics go, we have a pretty good gender split. And, and before I even get to that, I guess, phenomenal response. The sample size was really strong. It's seven hundred and ninety-one responses. You know, three-quarters of that were male in, which that contributes to kind of the second thing you'll see there is that it's a predominantly older cohort that responded because they're more likely to respond over, you know, male versus the online survey. And finally, you know, of the respondents, they were predominantly white with about two percent across the board from, you know, Hispanic Black, Asian, and, you know, Pacific Islander, and Native American. As far as geographics, most, eighty-eight percent of the people who responded lived directly in Independence. I think you got a few surrounding just from the county at large. Most of the people who did respond are long-term residents of Independence. Ninety-eight percent have lived in the city for more than twenty years. And most of them live on the west side. You can see the northwest side actually had a third of the responses. And it was kind of a mixed bag between the other geographies or kind of the areas in Independence. Finally, we had a really good income distribution. More than half were working with only, you know, the rest being either retired or with only very few being unemployed. And most of those who are working, are working within the city. You can see that, you know, there's a handful of telecommuting and working in Montgomery as well. So that's just a quick highlight. There are kind of two factors that we want to touch on that tend to sway the results. And the first is the difference in age distribution. You know, that top graph shows what the survey was. The bottom graph shows what the actual age distribution in Independence is. So on topics where age would, you know, tend to influence opinion, you're, what the survey purports to be the average viewpoint is probably less likely to reflect the true average opinion in Independence because the results kind of skewed or heavily favored at sixty-five in older cohort. You know, so in areas where it's relevant, we separated out responses by age. The second area is that, is the race ethnicity. You can, you know, same deal, top of the survey, the bottom is actual distribution. So, you know, we've got, we've got a little bit more white folks who responded than are actually represented in Independence. So same story on areas where race ethnicity matter, we separated out results. Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mackey.
Yeah, so, so diving in to the, the high level of our approach to analyzing these surveys. So this slide here shows what other consulting firms typically do with, with the data where they don't hear. Look at this chart with a bunch of different colors and try and figure out what it is. And while it can be a little easy to decipher that overall maintenance of city streets was, had more dissatisfied respondents, and overall quality of fire and emergency services had more satisfied respondents, it's hard to understand the nuance between those in the middle and what's truly a better response or which things residents are more happy about. So what we've done is we've adopted an approach that's widely used in statistical analysis. It's called a net promoter score. And so a net promoter score, in essence, is you take all the people who are promoters or who are happy, who are satisfied or very satisfied, you subtract the people who are very dissatisfied, and that's where you get your score. You actually take out those who are neutral or I don't know because they're likely to, they're not going to sway the results in either direction. So it's truly measuring, it's almost a net happiness score is another way of wording it in the specific citizen satisfaction area. So, so the application of that, what is a good NPS score? Anything thirty and above is great. Anything in the zero to thirty range is still good. And then anything in the negative is poor. And you can have a negative score if you were to have more people, more detractors than you were promoters. And so that's, that's the approach there. And so what it does is it turns a slide like this and a graph like this into a graph like this, where you can clearly see what that total net score is for these major categories. So you can see how overall quality of fire is off-the-charts great. Same with overall quality of police services and customer services. And then you can help see, what we have highlighted in yellow in the middle is the overall city average. So taking all the scores we've compiled, that's the average score that you have, which is really good that you're on the cusp between good and great across the board is your average score. And so...
Yeah, I'll let you turn this next... Yeah, so what I'm going to show you next is kind of a broad picture of all of the survey results kind of in one slide. So we would do that just by box plots. And if you're unfamiliar with that kind of visual, I'm just going to walk you through it. So you can kind of see up at the top is the highest score for this question, you know, for services. The bottom is the lowest for this kind of category. And then you can see thirty-six is the average. So that gets plotted a little bit like this. You know, the right side is highest, left side's lowest. You can kind of see how that compares horizontally with the scores. So if we were to look at all the categories that we, you know, measured on the survey, you know, we can actually see the ranges play out of, of how people were generally satisfied. So you can see, yeah, the range, services is kind of an all-inclusive category. It covers basically the range of all the other question categories. But you can also read it vertically, like the categories that are closer to the top are on average really high satisfaction. And the questions that are closer to the bottom have on average lower satisfaction. So we just review that, you know. Parks and Recreation, Public Safety, Customer Service were categories noteworthy of distinction. They, their ranges were normally within the grade to excellent range. On the other hand, yeah. On the other hand, like Internet Connectivity, City Processes, and Code Enforcement, these are areas of, you know, the lowest range of satisfaction. On total, if you're measuring the net promoter score of all questions asked, the average is twenty-eight. So you'll kind of see that in the presentation as a benchmark for, you know, going forward. You'll see that average come up a lot as, was an area above average or below average as it relates to the rest of the city. So kind of what the rest of our presentation looks like is we'll just run through each of these individual sections and kind of do a little bit of a deep dive into, you know, and answer your questions within each section. So if there are any questions up to this point, we're happy to answer them. If not, I'll turn it back over to Mackey, and we'll kind of, kind of go through this list.
All right, I think, go ahead.
Okay. So in-depth analysis of each theme. So for overall perception of the city. So the overall perception received at twenty-two, which is good, is however below average compared to some of these other areas. People, when they responded, said overall feeling of safety in the city, the quality of services provided, and the quality of life in Independence and Independence image is good. One thing I do want to take note on is having the experience I've had of working with citizens in Independence to build this strategic plan. It's, it's really cool to see that overall image of the city be in the great category. And it shows the great work that those in this room, virtually, I guess physically in the room in Independence, have done regarding that fifth pillar, which is community spirit and unity. I think this is a good reflection on the work you've done to build bridges and to really bring people together. And so if you go through this list, on the bottom area, you'll see with a score of four, overall value that you receive for your city tax dollars and fees. Keep in mind that there's a lot more price sensitivity for residents in Independence than perhaps in more urban areas. You'll notice that theme throughout when we talk about water rates and cost of internet as well. And then some of the other lower scores are related to growth and development, which we will dive into in one sec. And, and this is really, when we controlled it for age, so took out those in that sixty-five and older cohort, the growth scores were even lower. So the quality of new development, how well the city is planning growth, managing growth, those were areas that younger cohorts felt there could be a lot of improvement. Jason, can I turn it back to you on this section?
Yeah, so, you know, this is an area we want to look in on because this is the primary area of satisfaction kind of related to the economic growth. People just have a generally low perception of it. So, you know, we kind of dive in deeper to this idea. So we're going to broadly cover some categories of development and how people, you know, their perception. Regarding, you know, the current pay of commercial and office growth, there's kind of a fifty-fifty split. You know, some people think we're on target, while others think that growth is slower than it should be. If you kind of look at this a little deeper, employment is what is responsible for this split. You know, people who are retired or students are not working are skewed to thinking that commercial and office growth is just right. Whereas the actual people who are working day-to-day, they're much more likely to say that commercial growth is being too slow. Well, in all reality, they probably have the, the more accurate claim on, on, you know, on that response. As far as multifamily growth, you know, fifty-eight percent of respondents see, you know, that residential development is being on track or just right. For single-family residential development, you know, it's kind of a split again. You know, about forty percent see it as being too slow, fifty percent see it as being on track. Same kind of story as before. The people who are most likely to be single, like the kind of eighteen to twenty-five group, you can kind of see that they're more likely to say this growth is slower than it should be. And, you know, cohorts as they get older in age are more likely to say, yeah, it's just about right. Finally, for retail development, you know, the majority of people see it as being too slow. And age, rate, income, nothing really played a role here. It was just, you know, the biggest areas were being just right. And then with the majority saying too slow. It, you know, an art effect of that opinion, that retail development is too slow, is that a majority, sixty-five percent of residents, leave the city regularly to shop. You can kind of see that between a few times per month and a few times a year, people are leaving the city. Likewise, many in the, in the city are turning to e-commerce for shopping. Compared to the U.S. average, people in Independence shop online a little bit more than just your average American. You can kind of see in orange is the national averages. And, you know, nineteen percent are shopping a few times per week online compared to seventeen percent nationally. If we actually control this graph for age, it becomes even more skewed. You can kind of see that if we take out the group who's sixty-five and older, almost a third, twenty-nine percent of people are shopping online a few times a week. So this is kind of all a description or a picture of how people view past residential or past, you know, growth and development. So now that we have a picture of that, you know, we want to kind of look at the future growth and development.
Awesome. So we asked residents to prioritize those five pillars of the strategic plan. And the results really confirmed, one, that these are still priorities. And two, the order in which they are presented reflects the order of priorities that residents feel. Fifty-eight percent of residents viewed economic growth still as the number one priority, with over eighty-three percent in the top two. I think the city has done a great job at communicating to residents that economic growth helps maintain, helps keep taxes low because you're broadening that tax base. I've, I've heard people in this room mention those comments before, and I think that message is really recognized. Citizens are recognizing that, along with those you, more younger cohorts who do want more development. The second area with sixty-six percent placing in the top two is infrastructure, which is also the top priority for this year for your yearly strategic planning that you conducted as well. Beautification is a mixed bag, where fifty-nine percent place it between third and fourth. But we'll get into a later section, getting more in detail on beautification, specifically where citizens would like a priority on that. And then almost sixty percent of people see development of parks and recs as fourth or fifth. But this is likely because of the high satisfaction already. It's calling it out as a top five priority because they still want you to focus on it, but knowing that it's, it's not the, the source of any of their, their, their causes for concern or areas that they feel need to be improved. And then lastly, a community unity and spirit. And again, I think this is a testament to the good work that's been done over the last two and a half years to build the community and bring the community together. And I think that's evidenced by it being the fifth priority here. So diving into the first section, Parks and Recreation. The overall satisfaction for Parks and Recs has a net promoter score of fifty-seven. In fact, every individual area outperforms the city's average NPS score. So the overall quality and maintenance of Riverside Park is through the roof. You also have the overall maintenance of the zoo, programs and events. Just really, all the services that you do supply receive great scores. The only one that received just slightly on the cusp of being great was the overall quality of non-Riverside Parks. Diving into that a little bit further, forty-three percent of residents use non-Riverside Parks, so those more local neighborhood parks, with most of the individuals using them being in the central, east, and southwest sections of town. We also asked residents on pool usage, on if they would be using the pool for open swim. More than half in the southwest neighborhoods said that they would do so, with the overall average being just under forty percent. We actually, we collected comments as well. Again, residents are very pleased and continue to be pleased with what's done with Riverside Park and Zoo. A couple of areas where they did supply feedback was the city pool could use better maintenance and extending amenities such as pool hours as well as leaving the bathrooms open a little bit longer at Riverside Park. The other area of more major feedback or consistent feedback in written comments was those local neighborhood parks and getting the quality of those parks up and running, which we're actually going to talk about at the end when we present our recommendations. Before I move on to public safety, did you have any questions regarding Parks and Recreation and what residents were feeling?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Um, moving into public safety, overall satisfaction again was great. And I think, just to, you know, step out of this presentation and talk more at the large scale, given everything going on in the country right now, I think this is a good showing that residents feel safe, they feel like they can approach law enforcement. I think that's a really good sign when you compare to what other cities on the spectrum we're dealing with across the country. And so pretty much every category was, was, was up there. The only two that were good were education programs. And from, from talking to the police chief, there aren't too many education programs already being offered. So it's not that the programs would not be great, it's just that's not a service that's currently focused on, which is why it has a lower score. I'm going to turn to Jason to talk just a little bit about, what we did is we broke down safety between night and day for gender and for race.
Yeah, so what's featured here is, first, is overall feeling of safety during the day in your neighborhood. You know, eighty-seven percent of people feel safe or very safe in their local neighborhood. And as you can kind of see, there, there's not a lot of difference by gender. Men feel equally as safe, or women feel equally as safe as men during the day. So I'm going to need to, okay, yeah, yeah, control. Okay, and night, the feeling of very safe, though, decreases overall by about forty percent. You can keep going. Likewise, you know, three times more women report feeling unsafe at night compared to the day. But, you know, sixteen percent, not quite a fifth, but sixteen percent of women said, you know, I don't feel safe in my neighborhood at night compared to, you know, very small percentage during the day.
And, and while this isn't a unique... And, and while this isn't a unique issue to just Independence, that would, we would assume similar data would show in, in other communities, it is still important for you to be aware of to, to identify if there are things that, that the city of Independence can do to help make those individuals feel safer at night.
This is still split up by gender. We also just did overall, and overall, most people, seventy-one percent feel safe in Independence. No variance by age. So now we're splitting it up by race or ethnicity. They're kind of small bars, but what you're seeing here is, you know, during the day, go back on that real quick, sorry. During the day, you know, minority groups, so non-white people are two times more likely to feel unsafe in their local neighborhood than their white peers. And at night, that kind of gets exaggerated. You can go forward now. You know, at night, specifically African-American and Hispanic, Latino feel disproportionately unsafe compared to the white population. You can kind of compare on the bottom left highlighted, you know, white, you know, only about fifteen percent feel unsafe, whereas it's around twenty percent, sorry, about twelve percent, whereas it's around twenty percent for the Spanish and African-Americans. You can keep going. Okay, now instead of breaking out by gender and race, this, this graph shows, broke down now by kind of suburb or community and independent. You can kind of see, you know, the way we've got it laid out here is, if a, if an area appears further to the left, generally people feel more unsafe. And if it's further to the right, like central east, that generally reports to be the safest feeling, you know, the safest. And at night, it's kind of almost the exact same order, you know. The central west and southwest areas reported to much higher rates of feeling unsafe, you know, compared to other neighborhoods. Overall, citizens in southwest, northwest and central east reported the highest feelings of very safe. You know, like we just said with day and night, this is just overall. The central west and southeast areas had the highest feelings of, you know, unsafe, or very unsafe.
And then just some of the general comments spoke on how appreciative they were of police officers, their response times. But a couple of areas of feedback, several comments related to enforcing traffic laws, people in cars speeding down residential neighborhoods. Also, individuals that still do use drugs. That was actually pretty common in the feedback we received in 2018 when we did the strategic planning survey. And, but, and also residents did voice that they would like to see more visibility from police. They said, while it probably means that they're busy and doing great work, the more that they see police in their neighborhoods, the more safe that they feel. That was what the qualitative comments showed. Moving to customer service, just overall, those who interacted with the city needing assistance felt that city staff were courteous, they were competent, and just overall, they were great with customer service. For the specific reasons that they would interact with the city, it was actually mainly to talk about city service, so either pothole or trash, water. It wasn't necessarily because they were doing business with the city and had issues in, in that regard. However, when you, we, in the, the more massive slide deck that we sent out, it, it breaks it down based on complaints, but versus just general questions. And those are general questions, and the comments that, that we read through showed that just, again, they feel that city staff is very competent in addressing their concerns and their needs. When we move to utility services, there's some interesting takeaways here. Water pressure received great scores in water overall. The only areas that received below-average scores were drainage of rainwater off streets, as well as off the residents, and then what you are charged for utilities for both water and sewer. Again, going back to that price sensitivity for citizens in Independence. One interesting thing though, that one we felt was significant enough just to bring up, while overall taste of tap water scored highly, the southeast neighborhood reported thirty-five percent of respondents as dissatisfied. From our meeting with Kelly and her team, we learned a little bit of that is just related to infrastructure and piping in that part of, in that neighborhood and the community. Again, though, just real quick to touch on it, there was still forty-one percent said they were satisfied. It's just a higher dissatisfaction rate compared to the other parts of town. And then most people, when, when we asked about paperless billings, were not interested in receipt going electronic or paperless. However, when you break it down into age, it's almost reversed with the younger generations significantly preferring paperless online options and older generations preferring the opposite. When we spoke in our meeting with Kelly and her team, we did notice that during COVID, that spiked the demand for electronic use spiked up. But certain individuals, now that COVID has died down, are going back in person and preferring more in-person business interaction. Overall maintenance, this is where we get more towards areas that the city could improve on. So maintenance of traffic signals and preservation of downtown Independence and city lighting, great. When you get to areas towards the bottom, such as overall maintenance of major city streets, streets in your neighborhood, those are the areas that received the most feedback, as well as written feedback as well. Again, this is consistent with the feedback we received in the 2018 survey of residents wanting road improvements kind of across the board. When we dove into communications, accessibility, overall accessibility of internet, and the city's work to communicate what's going on in the city, they felt was great. They felt that certain ways to navigate the city website could improve and the availability. The, these bottom two are more out of the control of Independence, but useful data points, so, so independents can decide what they could do, which is the availability of local news from Topeka and/or Tulsa, as well as the cost of internet services. Again, how much of that is under the responsibility and the role of city government, that's to be discussed. But if there is something that the city could do to help facilitate it, it's worth considering. And then which of your, the following are your primary sources of information? Overwhelming majority used a quarterly newsletter and love having the newsletter, followed by newspaper, the local newspaper and social media. When you break that down into forty-five and younger, it's a dead-even split between the newsletter and social media, which I honestly found surprising, that younger generations read the newsletter, and I think that's a testament to the success you've had in engaging those generations with more, with that reward rather than just social media posts. Again, just the general comments related to, I like this one, the second and the last one. Information on the city's website is also generally not easily Google, Google-able. So being able to navigate the website is something that residents voiced, that they felt that there could be some improvement. And then as we're getting towards a couple of these last categories, city processes scored an NPS of five, this is low. In fact, all areas scored lower than the city average. And when we talk about city processes, it's those who are having to conduct business with the city, either building permits, building codes, coming in to get their zoning or platting process through. There's significantly less respondents for this compared to the overall, and those that are willing to take the time to respond to this are those who've had to go through this process. And so it's worth noting, noting that, we're going to touch on that in our recommendations. And then last, the last area is related to code enforcement, which received the lowest score. Several residents felt that the enforcing of mowing and cutting of weeds on private property, rental properties, exterior maintenance of residential homes, and enforcing the cleanup of debris on private properties was subpar. Comments though about that, how would you describe the city's level of enforcement when it comes to codes and ordinances? You have over half saying that it's too little, but it is somewhat of an even split of some people feeling it's just right. However, when we broke that down into neighborhoods, it drastically changed where those in the central and southeast neighborhoods felt that code enforcement could be greater. Again, those comments related to streets and potholes, but then also the upkeep of homes and the overall appearance of the city providing dumpsters, and just the way that clutter has amassed. Again, this is consistent, the city has been allocating resources towards home improvements for the last several years. And so one of the recommendations we dive into is going to be continue doing that. Before we dive into recommendations, were there any general questions on what residents were feeling in any of these categories we spoke on?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Cool. And honestly, I just, kudos on night, on keeping up with, I know NPS is this wonky, you know, analytical statistical tool that us consultants love, and a lot of Fortune 500 companies use it. And so we just appreciate you following along with it, and just, yeah, you digested it pretty well, or very well, I should say. As far as we dive into recommendations, specific recommendations based on the feedback, and we'll need to have additional conversation on if these are the right recommendations that the city staff can run with. We don't, we obviously wanted to, to, to achieve what citizens are voicing. One is continue to grow the exterior neighborhood grant program. Lacy walked us through the numbers and the demand for it, and I'm really impressed with that program rollout. So it's identify possible funding streams for continued beautification through that program. Also, conduct additional permit application research. We just have this in this initial data on this slide of those who went through building permit processes and their satisfaction. And while we do have a handful of comments, we don't have enough to fully dive deep into what specifically should change. And so we would recommend getting a group of people who have gone through the permit application process in the last year, and getting them in a room and diving a little bit deeper and, and better understanding their pain points and where they feel the city could improve in terms of being efficient. We also feel there should be a gradual rollout of an increase of code enforcement. Given COVID, doing it overnight might turn a lot of people off, but giving advance notice and setting that, that bar of what you are committed to enforcing regarding code enforcement would create transparency with the community, and then you could start implementing it. And lastly, identi, on, on the beautification side, identify neighborhood revitalization projects for the southeast and neighboring areas. Most of these comments related to citizens who live in that southeast part of town. And so we feel that to increase the morale of this part of town, identify and invest in any low-hanging fruit improvements that could be made. Our final recommendations, one touches on that discrepancy, and this is, this is actually countrywide. And I just got done doing a project for a city in Houston, it, it's just in the Houston area where it's really unfortunate, but two years ago, a black woman was shot and killed by an off-duty police officer. She also had schizophrenia, and there was an altercation that led to that shooting. And it really highlighted for the city the need to build better bridges and identify what resources police need so that they can be even more successful. So what we would recommend, and a big part of the takeaway we learned from that was community engagement. And I feel that that would be an effective approach relating to the discrepancy we saw in feelings of safety between white and non-white individuals. So conduct police outreach to minority communities. The police chiefs should, we recommend quarterly, but build a cadence of meeting with local leaders from these communities to identify areas of improvement, and also facilitate positive interactions. One thing we really learned from that other project that we feel could apply to Independence is every positive interaction slowly chips away at any negative stereotypes or, or feelings of animosity between residents and police officers that we're seeing in other parts of the country. Modify pool hours to meet demand. Based on the comments, a lot of residents want to swim post-work. And there are some residents who also want to come in even earlier. So at least explore if that is viable, to have pool hours at those times when there would be higher demand. You also, to continue to recruit and attract commercial development, that's something you're already working on. So it's really just to continue to leverage the tools that Independence has used to attract businesses. And then lastly, this is something that I've been working with other cities on that I feel can be effective for Independence, is dedicate ARP, or American Rescue Plan funds towards infrastructure improvements. I'm not sure if you all have gotten the notice, or if you've gotten, if you've received your funds yet. They should be coming in the next month or so. But there's, and I actually can send over the website to you, Kelly, I don't know if we fully dived into this part. But there's federal stimulus money that has certain restrictions on what you can and cannot use. It's the sequel to the CARES Act funds, I would call it. And they really specify that road infrastructure, drinking water and access to internet and expansion of broadband are eligible funds. When I looked up what Independence is due for, I think it was just over a million dollars was what the city would be getting. I'll have to go back and get you a firm number, but those are what the estimated funds that you would be receiving for ARP. If you don't mind me asking on a side note, did you, is there any news on American Rescue Plan? And if that's initially going to Montgomery County and that they're going to distribute it to the town, to the cities?
That's something that Lacy is working on, Mackie.
Okay. Perfect. So we would just recommend, again, aligning these, because this is one thing I would want to touch on, and after this, I'll get off any, any quick soapbox I have. We were able to be in a room where the governor of Utah spoke a few weeks ago. And he said, while we all agree that we might not need some of these funds, and we're spending these funds are our children and grandchildren's money, let's make sure that what we spend this on will benefit our, our children and our grandchildren. And so I think that sentiment really applies here with, with what, also in line with what residents feel are priorities for the city. And so you can align those ARP funds with infrastructure improvements, with drinking water, with internet, with a few of those other needs that were listed in this survey. And I think it's, it's a, it's a real blessing at this time that immediately after you've gotten this survey data, that can guide where you spend the funds. So you get the most bang for your buck in terms of satisfying residents. So with that, any questions or thoughts on this? We're happy to dive in.
Well, the, the one thing that stood out was we still have a lot of work to do on streets. And of course, we've known about that from earlier data, and it's something we continue to focus on. So hopefully that there will be more grant money available. And with this ARP, the American Rescue Plan, that we will, we'd be, we will be able to use some of that information. Some of that money for infrastructure improvements, which we desperately need here in the community. So, you know, we still have a lot of work to do, I understand that.
I think communication is going to be a key, because the last two years, I know there's been a big emphasis on addressing some of these issues. Streets, waterline improvements, sewer improvements, code enforcement. It's going to take a while to see the impact since it hadn't been, been done. But one thing I think, I know the commission and staff is committed to, to continue forward in that. One of the, the interesting areas I think we can follow is with just issuing the contracts for outside mowing of nuisance yards and city remote property. I think we'll see a big change, and I'm hoping to see a big change in our, our neighborhoods where we've had to raise houses, they were dilapidated and unsafe. So I think as, as lawns become easier to maintain, we got to the point of having so many that it was beyond staff's means to stay current. So I think this is going to be a big improvement for our neighborhoods. I thought it was interesting, too, the neighborhood parks, because we had had some discussion whether they were being utilized to their fullest and, and what the future of those should be. So the, the survey did really reinforce their importance to our residents, and I think it could give us direction to look at additional modifications or definitely maintaining and including those in our overall master plan. So this is really enlightening.
Well, I'm just very thrilled with the results, especially the citizens' participation in the survey. It seems to give it a lot of weight when so many of our citizens took the time to respond. And I'm, I'm, I'm interested in seeing these recommendations and expanding upon these recommendations that you've made to see what we might be able to do with them going forward. I see within the American Rescue Plan, one of the areas of emphasis is access to internet. And we continue to look for ways to, to do that locally as we, as we continue to investigate. Now, we've recently begun the process of hiring a, an information technology specialist for the city, and they the process of hiring a, a, an information technology specialist for the city, and they might have, uh, some input on that for us, I'm assuming. Is that correct?
They start Tuesday.
Starting Tuesday. All right. Well, that's just timely. And this information would suggest that we can put them right to work. So, thank you.
And to re, to reemphasize what you're saying, as far as that participation rate of the 791 surveys, I mean, just kudos to your staff for how hard they worked to get those survey responses. I, um, so in a similar project that we did for a couple of counties in Utah that had 1.5 million people, we only received 1,000 surveys. So it was, it was enough of a sample size to work with statistically speaking, but just this is a great mandate to run with these things because the individuals, uh, that, that fill out the survey are those that are engaged and are, are, uh, it's just, I, I'm just really excited that you had as many people respond as you could. I remember Kelly telling me, like I said, okay, we're good. Start analyzing. She goes, wait, we have 200 more surveys to enter. And I went, holy cow. So just great work again with, to your staff and your citizens on their response rate.
I would like to make one additional comment, uh, on this, um, because I know there are people that, that are online watching, they'll watch this meeting later, they're, they're on, listening to it now as it's happening. Um, but, uh, we still need to continue to, get, get the information out of what it is we're actually doing because it, you know, not everybody gets a newspaper. Some people don't get on social media at all because they don't want to get on it. But we need to continue to drive home what it is we are actually doing so that through various means of making this informational, uh, information available, uh, the newsletter, you know, that would be a good point to list all the improvements, whether it's, uh, water, roadwork, uh, nuisance, whatever, all these things that we, there were questions on, we are addressing. So it seems like a good number of people get that information from the newsletter. And if they're reading it, then those that, uh, don't want to tune in or watch this, or get a newspaper, or get on social media, that gives those people that don't hear a chance to hear what it is we're actually doing. So they see, we are making progress. You know, we've made progress on so many levels in this area, and we continue to make progress. We continue to address issues that keep reoccurring, and we keep trying to find ways how to handle and manage these issues. So it's, it's just more, it just drives the point, it's more important to continue to make sure that information out is out there and people understand that, yes, we have. If you haven't heard, yes, we have. And I can tell you how we are doing. I can tell you what we're doing on this. So that's something we still need to continue to reinforce like a hammer to make sure people understand what we are actually doing and they, we, we continue moving in that forward direction.
And we do do a recap of the annual report and the newsletter, but it is so massive, you can't put everything in there. And of course, the full document is online, but, but yeah, maybe we need to increase more pages during that time to make sure we can get more facts in.
Or, or maybe during that newsletter, show what, what is occurring in that particular timeframe. And then the next time it goes out, what's, what's going on in that next?
And we probably need to do them more often than we do now.
Because...
And one thing that is, one thing that is exciting is now that you have the survey, I mean, that survey is yours. So you can really, if it's annual, if it's biannual, whatever cadence you feel is appropriate, you can run the survey again. Um, and then, and, and, and save frankly, a lot of cost in terms of having to generate a new survey. And this can give you year-over-year numbers of measuring, okay, did we improve this year in citizen perception on this versus last year? Maybe we went down here. Why is that? I think it gives you, this is a good baseline from which you can measure success moving forward.
Right.
That's good.
That's good. Good point.
So, any other questions or comments? I have loved, I always love working with, with y'all, but just, and I, I wish I was in the room with you, but it's, it's been a real honor to be of service again to Independence.
Well, Mackie, we appreciate, uh, your help. You've always been a good supporter of Independence. You, you have, uh, ties here, and we always enjoy working with you. And we continue to hope that we continue to, uh, have that happen in the future with you. So we hope you don't run off anywhere.
Never. Um, I might run off to your neck of the woods, but that'd be the only place.
All right. Well, when you do, give me a, give me a heads up and I'll, and I'll arrange something for you.
Yeah, that sounds great. As far as a, a one parting word, um, as, as far as next steps, I'll have another debrief discussion with Kelly and just discussing a little bit of, of staff rollout of what's applicable to different departments, just to be a little bit of, of guidance. I don't want to dump the report on you and then say adios. I, so I'm going to meet with Kelly to talk a little bit on what next steps would look like.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackie.
Thanks again, everybody.
Thank you, Mackie.
Yep. Have a good evening.
Take care.
All right. Um, let's see. Oh, item number six, moving along. Uh, public hearing, public hearing to consider condemnation of 800 East Edison as dangerous and unsafe?
Mayor, uh, Tyler actually is going up in northwest Kansas tonight. He's going to be assisting with some storm damage. Uh, the state called for building inspectors to come help. So I thought it'd be a great experience. So he's not here tonight. He's up there helping. And, uh, so, uh, his recommendation on this is to adjourn for 90 days. He is working with the family. They are in contact with a local contractor. This is the home they were raised in. They want to, uh, refurb it for visits when they come back to Independence. So we, we continue, COVID slowed them down last year. So we're recommending to adjourn this for 90 days, please.
Understand. I, I know who you're referring to. And they, they will make sure that they, that they get this completed. So, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Gentlemen, do you have any questions on this?
Was there, did we need to call a public hearing?
It was actually opened, um, this is the continuation of it. So it had been opened previously because it was adjourned.
I see. Okay.
Is that correct?
Do we need to close it then before we make the motion?
Well, if you close it, then
I see. We're just adjourned.
Then you have to take action, but you adjourn it.
We're just moving it.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
I'm ready to make the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to adjourn the public hearing until August 26th, 2021 at 5:30 PM for 800 East Edison.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Uh, item seven, items for commission action. Item A, consider approving McCowen Gordon as the CMAR for the 1916 City Hall renovation and fire EMS building.
And Vance is on the phone.
Vance, how are you this evening?
I, I am fine. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, I'm glad to report, uh, you know, we've been working very closely with Vance, this RFQ, RFP process. And, uh, you know, we threw the selection process and then the final interviews of the last two, Kelly, Lacy, uh, our engineer, John Garrison, Vance, conducted those. And it, it was very tough. Two and a half hours that we sat in a room after they were finished with their presentations, going over that, talking it through. And it was a tough decision. Uh, the scores came down to a 92 to 93. But, uh, we feel, uh, that McCowen Gordon will bring the services that not only will be, uh, the community can watch what we're doing, but it keeps the commission informed that they're on top of it, uh, their offerings, pre-construction services, constant review, analytics, and resources. So Vance, I don't know if you have anything to add. Uh, we have also visited with them, uh, to address the potential water issues in the basement and the tightness of that building and have you guys some answers in the next 30 days. Uh, so Vance, do you have any comments?
No, I, I would just second what you said, David. Um, the process was, was handled very professionally, uh, going through and shortlisting. We had, we had four original submittals, narrowed it down to two. And the interviews, both companies did a great job in the interview. Both companies did a great job in answering our questions. And like David said, the committee came down and it took a long time to make a decision. But, uh, we are ready to go and believe that the sooner we can bring them on board, the sooner the project can move forward.
Understand. And, uh, and looking over the documents that were sent, it looks like you've, uh, worked with this, uh, McCowen Gordon on numerous projects over a period of time. So you're well familiar with them.
That is correct. We know them well and, and believe they can perform very well for the community of Independence, Kansas.
Gentlemen, do you have, um, comments you would like to make for Vance?
This proposal is in line with my expectations.
I think it's, it's good to see when you have, um, four firms submitting information and narrow it down to two, and then you look at the scores, uh, how close they are, that it's comfortable and reassuring to know that we're going in a good direction, that, um, each one seemed to be well suited, but yet when it came down to the individual details and, uh, the comfort level is probably as important as skill that the city staff and you Vance feel comfortable working with, uh, McCowen Gordon and their staff, that that's a, a big plus. When you get that, that bond and the communication established, the, the results of the project is much more, um, satisfying for the community.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Vance. Thank you, David. Uh, with that, um, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve McCowen Gordon as a CMAR for the 1916 City Hall renovation and fire EMS project and to authorize the mayor to sign any related agreements or documentation pending the city attorney's review and approval.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Vance.
You're welcome. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. Item B, consider proclaiming May 28th of 2021 as National Poppy Day and authorize use of the park oval.
Mayor, uh, we received this request and they are asking to use the park to do this. And Crystal and Barb have reviewed this and they're okay with it. It's our recommendation to authorize this.
Okay. I understand there was just, um, just selling poppies and those just before.
Exactly. Yes.
And they've done this for several years.
And they've done this for, yeah, I'm, yeah, that, that poppy, national poppy goes, goes back many, many years. So I don't, I don't have any comments on that. Gentlemen?
We, uh, we have a history, a great history of being, uh, supporters of veterans and, uh, this very building is a memorial to World War I veterans. And, uh, and I think that it's only appropriate that we continue to support this effort.
I think it's a good reminder that freedom isn't free, that it's, it's given to us with a cost. And, um, the, uh, the proclamation is, is very detailed in explaining how the poppy became, uh, the symbol for, uh, Memorial Day and, and to honor the veterans that began in, uh, World War I. Unfortunately, the war to end all wars didn't, and we need that reminder each year that, you know, what allows us to be unique is that freedom that was paid for by so many men, women, and families that, that answered the call to, to sacrifice their all for our country, that we can live and enjoy those freedoms today. So I think it's quite a privilege that we have the honor as commission to approve this and proclaim, uh, Poppy Day.
Thank you, Commissioners. And entertain a motion, excuse me.
I move to designate May 28th, 2021 as Poppy Day in Independence, Kansas, to allow the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 139 to sell poppies at the Oval on May 29 and May 30.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Item C, consider adopting a resolution for a conditional use permit for storage and warehousing of non-hazardous goods in a C4 highway commercial district at 2400 West Main Street, which happens to be the, uh, the old location of the former Sonic.
Yes, um, Mayor and Commissioners, this is a business, a local business. It's rather successful, local business. Anytime we go there, there's usually quite a few people. And they, um, where they were at, uh, was sold. So they wanted, they needed to relocate. So they have, uh, made arrangements, uh, to secure this space, and they needed some storage for the things to serve the restaurant, kind of similar to what Brent Littleton does at Dairy Queen. And, uh, that required a conditional use permit. So the planning commission approved it and, uh, we're bringing it to you.
I understand on the information that was sent out, there were some pictures attached of where he'd indicated that his plans were to kind of, uh, dress up, uh, down the road, this storage container.
Yeah. And, and this is not approval for that, but he wanted to, to know what its future plans were. And of course, that'll require a building permit and an engineer, an architect, and all that when it gets to that point. But right now, if he's just using it for storage, uh, then he could do that just like, um, it's being used at Dairy Queen.
Right, right. I was, I, yeah, I was just impressed that, um, down the road, he was looking at, at turning it into something other than just a
And the reason
storage container on site.
Dairy Queen didn't have to have a conditional use permit is, is an accessory use to their primary use because they have a physical restaurant, and this is more of a mobile thing. So the, the container will stay there. So that's the difference.
Okay. All right, good.
Question, due to the size, it'll require a building permit before he sets a, the container?
I, I, I would have to look. I don't think so, but it might.
Yeah. It seemed like a, a structure over 100 square feet, but I don't, what I guess...
120.
Yeah. What I'm, I'm wondering that with his plan, of course, that he said he wants to use it for storage and warehousing, but then his picture shows the modification that right now, before it's set on site, it's a story, a shipping container. But once it sits down on site, it becomes a building. And with the building, then it requires structure and there can be a lot of things coming along, particularly with his modification, that he probably needs to address upfront before he sets it. So he doesn't have to redo.
Yeah. I'm meeting with him tomorrow morning. Uh, you know, Tyler and I met today. We had quite extensive discussion about this. Uh, you know, it, it's going to require architect, engineer, uh, the IBC requires, uh, you know, just even in storage, uh, has to be secure. So if you have a tornado or something like that, it's secure. So I mean, we're going to go through all this process with him tomorrow to ensure that it is properly set and the building permit, uh, will review the size of the container. I'm not quite sure that I've heard yet the size of container he's going to purchase. So, and we will go through all of that. So, you know, initially, uh, if it's just storage and we can get it secure and it meets the right size, we'll be able to set it. But to, when you go to a shipping container, the four corners are your load points. And by the IBC, it's very minimal cuts you can make into the sides of any of it without a structural engineer because of, that weakens that. without a structural engineer because of that weakens that. And all of that, that we will go over with him tomorrow so that he understands why it requires an architect and an engineer to design that.
And even within its storage, I guess this kind of opens a question as the storage containers become more prevalent and more accessible than as they start appearing in residential areas or other locations, that maybe we need to look at, particularly the anchoring down that, you know, in storms. And I was interested a few years back and did a little research too. And there are anchors that can be used unmodified to secure them at the corners. But you still have to have the footing developed to with the uplift.
IBC requires us to see a stamp from an engineer.
Yeah.
So I mean, he's going to have to provide us an engineer's recommendation to secure it and structurally.
Because they've become very popular and there's a lot of interesting adaptations, but they never go into showing the full detail of what it took to get there. And a lot of misconceptions of going in and cutting large openings. And the wall panel is actually giving the strength that holds the top up.
And the planning commission is reviewing the storage containers and the tiny houses at a future meeting in April's helping them because some people are using them for housing. And so they're going to work on trying to develop codes on some of that to recommend.
Because it'll all tie back, once it's inhabitable, it'll tie back to our building, like you cited, the IBC.
The minute he goes from storage to anything else, it becomes a building, commercial, and well, it could be residential. Goes under the IBC.
It's a lot easier to do it when you're setting it on a suitable attachment basin than set it on concrete block and then have to come back, even as a storage building. And now you have to put the footing and.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
All right, so I entertain a motion on this.
I move to adopt a resolution granting a conditional use permit for storage and warehousing of non-hazardous goods in a C4 Highway Commercial District at 2400 West Main Street with the following conditions. One, the conditional use permit is not transferable to another location. Two, the conditional use permit shall be reviewed for compliance every five years. Three, the primary use of the proposed shipping container will be warehousing and storage of non-hazardous goods related to the food truck business. All such goods will be stored inside the shipping container or food truck. Four, the access road from West Main Street and West Laurel Street will remain accessible to employees and patrons of the business unless required to be modified by KDOT. Five, the location of solid waste equipment shall be designed by the company and will need to be approved by city staff. All solid waste containers shall be screened from adjoining properties. Six, the parking lot shall be maintained in appearance and shall not be used for overnight storage of vehicles not directly related to the business. And seven, any additional exterior lighting on site will need to be approved by city staff.
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Item D, consider adopting an ordinance vacating a portion of East Myrtle Street and North Wald Avenue.
Gentlemen, this is a result of our work session with the county. And Jeff has reviewed the ordinance and he has prepared a motion for you.
All right. I'm getting there. Hang on. All right, let's see. We have, are there any questions on this? We pretty much went through this in our work session with the county, gentlemen.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Hayes?
During the conversation that we had, we were talking about vacating the street to include a shared agreement for a portion of it. Is that included?
No, that's not included in this. We need to work on that.
Okay, that'll be a separate motion?
Yeah, it'll be, and it's not, it's not pressing to do that one right away.
Indeed. Okay.
Just curious. Then with that, I entertain a motion.
Based upon a finding that no private rights will be injured or endangered and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience, I move to adopt ordinance 4362, vacating East Myrtle Street, starting 50 feet west of the southwest corner of the intersection of Wald Avenue and Myrtle Street right-of-way. Then eastward approximately 420 feet and vacating North Wald Avenue, starting at the southwest corner of the intersection of Wald Avenue and Myrtle Street. Then southward approximately 90 feet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Item E, consider adopting a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit for supplementary parking at 117 North Wald Avenue. And consider adopting an ordinance rezoning a tract of land at 117 North Wald Avenue from R3 Low Density Multi-Family District to M1 Light Industrial District.
Gentlemen, I have prepared the resolution based on the feedback that we got from the commission and the modifications that you gentlemen worked on in your work session. And the city attorney has reviewed it. On the zoning ordinance, I referred back to the conditions of the conditional use permit, which is why I asked for the conditional use permit to be approved first and then the rezoning.
So are we good, gentlemen?
I have no further questions.
I am good.
All right. I entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit for supplementary parking at 117 North Wald Avenue with the conditions as discussed with the Montgomery County Commission on May 24th, 2021, and recommended by staff. Two.
Yeah, you probably have to do them separate.
I second that motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried.
I move to adopt an ordinance rezoning a tract of land from R3 Low Density Multi-Family District to M1 Light Industrial District at 117 North Wald Avenue with a requirement to be in compliance with a conditional use permit for supplementary parking approved on May 27th, 2021 by Resolution 2021-017.
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
It feels really good to have that I didn't take.
Yes, yeah. And everybody's.
I just had to say.
Everybody's team.
And Kelly, you did a remarkable amount of work in preparation and planning of the joint meeting, as well as the working this through the planning and zoning. So thank you very much for all your efforts.
Well, thank you for your support on this. Appreciate it.
It was your idea and it worked perfectly. They're happy and we're happy.
I get lucky once in a while.
You keep at it, eventually that's going to happen.
If you work hard enough, you get lucky.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. Item F, consider authorizing purchase of standardized sanitation slash trash carts. John, how are you today?
Doing great.
I thought maybe you were going to have me get in that and pop out of it.
This is the recommended cart. This is from auto manufacturing and they were the low bid. Each of these carts is at a cost of $52.35 and that's delivered to us. That's the delivered price. Each of these will have its own radio frequency identification chip in it and its own individual serial number. And as you can see on the picture there, it will be embossed with a a label that shows our city's logo. We're recommending, each one will also have a 10-year warranty. That was pretty standard within the bids. And all of them will require some assembly required. We will have to put the wheels on. Let's see. It's approximately 40 days from when we order to when we'll receive those. And based on the numbers, I think we're going to have roughly about 7% buffer in additional carts that won't necessarily be rolled out on day one. That'll be either for growth or for attrition of the carts. That seemed to be, seemed to feel like a pretty good number. So any questions?
How will we actually get these to customers?
We will have to take them out one at a time. So I've made the assumption so far, you know, used a calculator and thought it's going to take at least six weeks to roll them out. So once we get them, at least six weeks. Of course, we'll have to do some assembly as well. And when you're doing 3,700 of anything, that's, you know, even if it only takes a minute to put one together, it begins to add up.
So will you have the sanitation staff do the assembly? Or will we need additional labor to do that?
I would look to either have the sanitation staff or, you know, have a joint effort with other city departments to come and help put it together.
And will we notify the neighborhoods as we begin to deliver in their neighborhood to be looking for them?
Yes, and they're also going to be changing the route day. So we'll have to do quite a bit of communication. Because it's going to take a little while to get these right, once you order them.
Yes. Again, it'll be 40 days minimum and then like six weeks for rollout.
We spoke earlier this evening about how important communication is. And this is probably another one of those where we probably won't be able to over-communicate what we're doing here.
Absolutely.
I think John has an excellent plan that he's putting together to do that, to ensure the communication.
And you can also put pamphlets on them when you deliver them that shows the new route days too.
That's also a good idea.
And one of the things to note is, we're not the first people to do this. I found some brochures from across the country and people who've done it and I thought communicated very well. Additionally, you know, we talked earlier about streets. This will impact streets as well. One of the things that we're doing on a regular basis is we're sending heavy sanitation trucks through the alleys. That, alleys are getting pounded. And as a maintenance issue, that, I mean, that's an additional maintenance issue. In many areas, we'll be taking the carts and requesting that residents put them out in front, rather than putting them out in the alley. Now, that'll be a difference, but we'll be putting people again out on the street to get those carts, rather than going through the alleys. And so that, and the streets are much better able to take those loads. So we'll also have to communicate when we do that. Hey, you were in an alley. Now you need to go to the street. But of course, further complications. I mean, on North Penn, we're not going to ask people to put their carts along North Penn with that level of traffic and that kind of speed. So there's some alleys we still have to use. And right now, I have maps that show those alleys and we'll need to be able to communicate with everyone. Hey, if you're in this area and this is your alley, you're still in the alley, but everybody else is going to be out front.
And the neighborhoods that also have like a steep front yard or something, they'd have to make some adjustments on those and not pick them up in the front. Kind of depends on the neighborhood a little bit.
So you've pretty well looked at everything, the modifications you have to make as far as pickup, depending on location and all that?
We have our first plan. And one of the things we're going to do is we're going to get with the county. We're going to take our maps. And we're going to count all the residence and pickup areas inside there and make sure that the count seems reasonable. You know, so that we don't have, you know, 1,500 on one day and then 350 on the next. So we'll go back through and it'll be an iterative process. And I wish I could say that we're going to be perfect the first day that we come out. But we'll probably find an area or two where we have to go and say, oh, you have to go back into the alley too. We're going to look at it more than once, more than twice. But there is that possibility that we make a mistake or two.
It'll be an adjustment, but it'll allow us to use our personnel in other areas that we will need them in. And then my other question was, all the sanitation trucks, if they're not retrofitted now, they are in the process of being retrofitted as far as being able to pick up the cart and.
Yes, I have quotes on providing those tippers, the hydraulic arms that pull the carts up, from two companies right now. And we're looking to get those locked and installed.
Now, how many trucks already have those?
I believe we just need two.
Yeah, most of the trucks already have them because we've been planning for this.
Good. Okay. Good.
It also offers some safety advantages because when you look at it, the employee will be. Right now, there's a lot of lifting and that, you know, that causes repetitive stress injuries. So over time, we're going to have healthier employees.
Yeah, we should cut down on workman comp issues.
Well, also we've had, because they physically have to handle the trash, we've had people cut by things in the bags, the bags break open and things like that too.
Well, it's a good plan. I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see what they look like. I know they've been tested for wind and rolling resistance and just about everything possible. So, and they've been an established company. They've been around for a good number of years, good design, so.
Yeah, this is actually, we had three carts from manufacturers and we kind of did an informal look at in the office. And this is actually the shortest of the three. And I kind of liked that because that meant it's less likely to tip over in the wind.
All right. Thinking like an engineer.
This will be a big change, but a good improvement with the attached lid will keep animals out of the garbage. And in different locations, the size of the sanitation truck, when they turn off the street, that they, the alley curb radius is inadequate.
Absolutely.
I've got two areas that noticed ruts and there's just no way to maintain it. So it's going to be a big improvement to bring the trucks back onto the street and.
And, you know, a full cart is much less likely to tip over. But on a very strong, gusty day, an empty cart might. But it's square, so it's not going to roll. It's not going to roll down the street and the lid is going to stay with the cart.
Gentlemen, any further comments?
I'm good.
Good?
Good.
All right. I entertain a motion.
I move to authorize purchase of 3,700 blue standardized sanitation carts from Auto at a total price of $193,695.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Mayor, could we call for, we've been two hours. Can we call for a 10, five-minute break?
Five-minute break, yeah.
I would second that motion.
All right. And we will resume in five minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We're back in session. Moving along, item G, consider awarding the Zoo Master Plan Project to PGAV Architects.
Mayor, I'm happy to present this to you tonight. This is a project that Angela was working on. And, you know, this is the cornerstone of our park and getting, continuing to improve upon what is already, as our survey showed, a very popular part of Independence and an attraction to Independence. And this is going to give us that foundation that we need in the roadmap that we need to go forward. Because we see a lot of projects that we need to do out there. But getting that roadmap and that plan so that we can then work with Lacy and, you know, set our capital projects. And also, we also have been approached by people and companies that want to donate and sponsor exhibits and do things. And this plan gives us that roadmap. And we had interviewed PGAV and then with the change, Bar- And, uh, we had interviewed P G A V and then with the change, Barb, Katie, Crystal, and I sat down with them for an hour uh, last week and just went back through it. I, I'd already was aware of what Angela's recommendation is, and I agreed with that, but I wanted to bring the staff that's now in charge up to speed and review it one more time. And we discussed a lot about the transition. And, uh, P G A V is willing to get approval, uh, we're gonna wait till, uh, the first viewing of the new director positions, see if we have a candidate that we can hire, uh, and if that's possible, then they will start as soon as that person has come on board and had a few weeks, maybe August first, we will get started with this zoo master plan and go from there. But, uh, they're willing to do that, hold it, and put that person, so that person has a role in this. The other thing I really like about this company is they are going to come and they're gonna visit with you gentlemen, they're gonna visit with the public, the park board, forepaws. I mean, they really are gonna invest and get information out of this community to give us the best plan possible. Where, and I, that was probably one of the key things that I liked about their plan. So, uh, all of those visits, all of those sessions with everybody, so that we get the most out of the plan and.
They're basically gonna ta, uh, tailor it to what the community wants to see, what it
Yes, I mean, they're
their vision is.
They want that input, they wanna hear from not only city staff, the commission, and the boards, but the public, so. The people will have their opportunity, if they wanna a voice in what this plan's gonna look like and what they wanna see in Riverside Park going forward, they will have that opportunity.
And not only that, ensuring that the exhibits, as they're modified or replaced, will meet those standards that we're trying to meet through the A Z A. Because that is our ultimate goal, and it may take us a long time to get there, but this is basically a twenty-year plan. And so, it will give us the tools that we need to work towards that goal.
I think the last zoo planner that was involved with the exhibits was in, uh, nineteen ninety, ninety-one. So, with the exhibits around the Stevens Building, so a lot of standards have changed. But, you know, the, the master plan, the benefits for us as a city, it gives us the knowledge of somebody that has worked in a lot larger zoos, but then the resource to guide us yearly to keep on track. And I think from what I, I saw, sometimes it's, it's more important to have a qualified planner tell you, no, that won't work, even though that's what you want, because they've seen enough to guide you. Now, we're, we're limited on our exposure to maybe visiting a few zoos, but we don't know the whole parameter on what developed that decision, and they, they look like a, a good source of, uh, of an architectural firm with that experience. Will, will be able to draw on years to come, not just
Yeah.
a one-time project, but for years coming, they'll help maintain our accreditation and, and keep us focused on task.
Indeed, these types of, uh, plans are, uh, are really important to us as we do our strategic planning for the city and for the parks and for the zoo. And, uh, without guiding those incremental steps that we can take on an annual basis or, you know, more periodic basis, should be considered in compliance with the, the end, with the end in mind, with the end goal in mind, this type of plan should give us that end goal so that we can always know that we are making incrementally improving steps towards that, that plan. Is this, uh, my question is, is this, uh, requi, it is required as it's part of our accreditation process for the A Z A accreditation. Uh, how frequently do you know that, uh, does this need to be, uh, refreshed for accreditation to continue?
David, did you ask that question when you interviewed him?
I did not, uh, Lacy, do you, we, do, I do not.
I, I presume, uh, more frequently than thirty years.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That would be the outside limit.
His discussion with me the, last week was that they are gonna stay involved, you know, he said, when the plan's done and we've given it to you, that doesn't mean that P G A V has stopped. We're gonna continue to work with you and walk with you.
What, uh, what we probably ought to do, uh, as a follow-up to this is to set some kind of review interval, whether it's five years or ten years or whatever.
Right.
Close, whatever is required, so that the passage of time doesn't, uh, uh, outdate or obsolete our efforts. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, if there are no further questions, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve P G A V Architects' bid for a zoo master plan for seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. Next on the, item H, consider setting the date of July twenty-second, uh, two thousand and twenty-one for a public hearing to consider condemnation of five oh five North Twenty-Fourth as dangerous and unsafe. David.
Mayor, this, uh, house was involved in a structure fire and, uh, Tyler is asking that you guys set this date. He is working with the family, we have been in discussions with them, so, uh, you know, we'll continue to work with them and see what can be done, but it is dangerous and unsafe and is gonna have to be removed.
Looks like the fire was pretty extensive and, um, pretty much structurally unsound.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, and you're still working with the, the owner of the property?
We're working with the family, uh, this was a fatality fire and the, uh,
Okay.
so, the person that owned and lived there is no longer.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry, sorry. I don't have any other questions. Gentlemen?
I'm good.
I have no questions.
All right, I enter, I, can I entertain a motion, please?
I move to set the date of July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one at five thirty P M. for a public hearing to consider condemnation of five oh five North Twenty-Fourth Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried, thank you. Uh, item eight, reports, uh, Lacy, how are you?
Good.
This is, you're here to present the treasurer's quarterly financial statement for the quarter ending March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one.
Yes, do you all have any questions on the treasurer's statement that was in your packet, and it's, it's also posted online?
Just a general one, uh, Lacy, I know that there's kind of a natural ebb and flow in, in these accounts as money's received and expended. And so, I think there's some seasonality based on when the tax revenues are received. So, there's, some quarters are up in funds and some quarters are down in funds. Is this one of the up quarters, the first quarter?
Yes, cause we get our, our largest tax disbursement in the first quarter.
Okay, all right. That makes sense because it does look like most, well, most of it can be accounted for, and most of the increase can be accounted for with the, uh, increase in the general fund money. Thank you.
The industrial fund, uh, item four, and water treatment plant upgrade are both in def, deficits, what's the industrial?
The industrial fund, um, is a tax-levered fund, but we, we, I think it's twenty-seven thousand dollars that we budget out of that fund, and we budget the exact amount in, um, levered dollars, so we're just pending our next tax, this, next disbursement, which comes in June.
Oh, okay. What is, excuse me, what is the industrial, is it just kind of a utility fund you have?
We pay our MAC membership and our Chamber of Commerce membership from there.
It's kind of a membership then. Okay, and on the
And then on
water treatment plant, is that just in between drawdowns?
Yes, that, that, um, we have not requested a loan disbursement on this second portion. Um, typically, we have to have all design and engineering, um, completed before we can take our first drawdown.
Okay.
Okay, I don't have any questions, Lacy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Engineering Public Works Project Status, we've, John's coming up again, I, I li, I like this, I like getting this, it keeps us, uh, involved on where we're at on this, and, uh, gives us a chance to ask questions, John, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Um, this, uh, really kinda started as an internal report to understand what the status of every project was, where they're moving to the system. Um, as it is, it's not complete at this point, for instance, it doesn't have City Hall on it, City Hall will be on next month. And as we get more data, uh, the, the accuracy of everything will, will be better. You know, right now, just note that, uh, of what I know, if you add City Hall into this, there's over thirty million dollars worth of capital projects that we're looking at.
Wow.
Now, that's not all money that the city will spend. Many of it is coming up through grants and, uh, either, but, we, we've got a lot going on.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great. That is great.
Question on the, the transportation alternatives grant, the eight-foot sidewalk to Walmart. What was that a, a beginning point and, maybe, could you just, why eight feet wide, where's it start, where's it end and?
Uh, that, that particular project, I believe, starts at the bridge and moves out to Walmart. So, it's eight feet wide, so it could be used by bicyclists or by people, uh, you know, pushing strollers, so it's, uh, and, and so the grant itself is transportation alternatives to roadways, and so it's a KDOT grant that, I believe, eight foot is roughly the minimum that they're looking for.
Okay, so like a, yeah, a trail and sidewalk.
Ex, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, and the grant period opens, I, I don't remember when the last time was, uh, but it will be open again sometime this, uh, summer or fall.
I have noticed a lot of pedestrian traffic out in the highway because there is no walk.
Yes.
Oh, that's great. On the waterline meter project, uh, see, we're getting the plans, preliminary plans and, in the design process, is there consideration to put the new waterlines in the right-of-way instead of back in the street, or has that been discussed with you yet?
We, we, we haven't had a conceptual layout yet. Um, we, we've pulled some of them out of the alleyway because of some design considerations if the sanitary sewer is close, too close to water line.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
But, but we don't have a, where it's going to go yet.
Okay. I think a few years back, when we replaced the waterline on South Tenth Street, we went to the right-of-way instead of in the street, just there's a leak, we're not tearing up our streets and.
And, and, if that's possible, that's, that's very nice because you can keep that investment as well. And that, that's the nice thing, is the preliminary survey will give us all the data on what everything, whatever, what's there, you know, what do we have to cross.
As, uh, phase two of the water treatment plant, do we have an update on, on where the drawings or the plans are for that?
Uh, for the master plan?
No, for, didn't we approve phase two for an addition, some sludge pits? Uh, clean out or?
If we went back to the master plan, as part of the master plan, and all that's being
Yes.
put into that master plan that we're gonna bring back to you, Leonard.
Okay, I thought we had the
We started to go that route, but then, when they told you guys what the condition was and it's only gonna be ten years, and it's a twenty-year payout, you're like, we're going to the master plan.
Right.
Okay.
And, and so, on the water
We expanded a lot, the clear wells, masons, uh, pumps. So, okay, that was, yeah, I thought we were moving ahead, I think it was in last August, we talked about a, uh, addition on the front of the water treatment.
Yeah, and all that's being done in the master plan, he'll be able to bring all that.
Yeah, and the, the, the master plan itself is, um, I, I would say it's pretty close. Actually, it's close enough to, uh, bring to the commission, and I think that we're scheduled to do that on the sixteenth, at, at a special meeting, so there'll be a, quite a bit of detail there
Yeah.
because they went into, uh, went into great, they, they, they looked all the way through our system, so.
Well, the schedule is really gonna help keep track of things like that. The, I, I like the, the concept that you've laid out, it's informative, gets direct answers and, and, and that was a case with the, my understanding of phase two, we, we talk about so many projects, it all gets muddled and where are we on that, did we forget something? So, this is great, appreciate it, John.
Yeah, the, the second Tuesday of every month is when I put this together. And so, you know, it's, the data on here is already three weeks old because things have already changed, but, um, so, that, that's, it's got a one-time-a-month, uh, freshness date, so.
And the reason for that is that's when we meet with Trend Systems to go over projects, and that's something we were doing previously, now John is taking that over for us.
That's good.
Yeah. Yeah, this, the, yeah, I, I just like the concept, I like being able to see this, have it in front of us, so we can also know, know where these projects are at a given time. Commissioner Hayes?
Looks good, John, thanks so much.
Thank you.
I do wanna make, uh, I guess we found out that, uh, we did not get the grant for the Sycamore Street.
That's accurate.
Okay, uh, and that we will have a chance to reapply for that next, next year?
Yes.
Okay, so hopefully we'll have better luck next time. All right, John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, C, City Board Minutes, um, any, any comments on those, gentlemen?
I have none.
I have none.
All right, uh, next, City Manager comments, Kelly?
Uh, well, you mentioned the cost share, the good news is the work's already done, so it should be easy to submit next year. Um, we, we knew that was a long shot because we had gotten that awesome cost share project with, um, Maple Street, so.
Right.
Um, but, uh, anyway, so that was the update on that. The employee health affairs, uh, June first, if any of you signed up for that. Uh, we had a meeting last meet, week on, uh, Central Park and, and with the school superintendent and a representative from the college and the committee that's working on Central Park, Commissioner Koflesh is on that committee, uh, looking for, um, areas they would, are interested in another, um, ball, ball field for baseball that, that meets regulation, so we're problem-solving, trying to find if there's a way we could work together and find a location for that. And so, I'm just waiting to hear back from Doug on that. Um, so I wanted to give you an update on that. Then I emailed you today, the old nineteen seventy-nine streetlight policy, and maybe it's time to revise that. Um, I think I was in grade school then, but, anyway. Um, and also, um, the information that Evergy sent us after you made that request that I reach out to them. And then Jerry and John have been, uh, working on some ideas about possibly tying some, some lighting, uh, levels based on, you know, he has a crime map and things, so they can overlay to see where there's some neighborhoods that maybe we need a little bit more light that might deter some crime, which isn't how they used to think about it, but, you know, things have changed, maybe we need to think about that, not just tra, traffic safety related to these lights. So, if that's something you would like us to review and explore, let us know and we'll be happy to do that. If it's not something you're interested in, that's fine too, we just kinda need direction on that.
I think in, in some locations where a streetlight will help, one thing would help, I think, uh, when we were discussing it, the question was brought up um, regarding the distance the light would project from a light pole, I think a photometrics chart on the light fixture gives that information. It doesn't do a lot of good just to highlight one area brighter if it doesn't spread the light over the area, so the photometrics for the fixtures that are being used would help look at, at those areas when you get into, um, some of the residential areas. When you get into, um, some of the residential areas, there aren't poles mid-block. So it's mainly just traffic and how do you secure the middle of the block? You don't wanna just make the intersection brighter, then the people living close to that corner is, you know, daylight and not.
Right.
But it would be interesting to see as you highlight those areas and, uh, that have had a crime, that, how we can address some issues and.
The nineteen-seventy-nine policy is probably due for review.
Yeah.
You know, there was requests and that we, uh, agreed on at a meeting several months ago and it was, uh, security lighting out there on the South Tenth Street Park. The neighborhood had, had called in and said that there was, uh, night traffic out there. People parking there in, 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 in that alleyway, that's what I would call it and.
There are two lights.
And, and they.
I've been through that four in the morning.
Yeah, and, and that, uh, helped.
Not parking, but.
Illuminate, yeah, illuminate that because people had concerns in the neighborhood. So maybe in areas where city property is, you know, maybe being vandalized or that, um, lighting really does, uh, has a way of deterring, uh, that type of activity.
Right.
And so, um, I, I like that idea about tying it to, uh, areas where maybe there are, um, you know, crime issues, uh, in certain areas throughout the city. When you're, you know, approaching vandalism, things like that, uh, lighting can really make a big difference, so.
So the other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, it's, we're still a ways off, but we have, um, a project we would like to look at, which is the extension of some streets, um, around the school area with Thirteenth and Twenty-first Street and extending those to open that area up and also looking at the same time of doing some kind of, uh, fifteen-acre lake. There's a wetland area in there that the school actually owns and that was recommended in the hydrology study.
Yes.
So, uh, briefly talked to Doug Pickard about that and he brought up some things that we need to look at. But I wondered if, um, like you gentlemen had selected, uh, Leonard to help us with the Central Park plan, would somebody want to help us with, um, our committee to work on this project? 'Cause it's gonna be a major project with a lot of partnerships, um, grants, bonds. It's gonna be a, a, it's gonna take a lot of planning. I didn't want, know one if you wanted to be involved in that.
I'd be glad to assist with it, Mr. Mayor, if you.
Okay.
So wish.
That would be fine, yes.
All right, well, thank you very much.
If I could, okay, that works good for me, Leonard's already with the central plan, so yeah, that would be good.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And unless you have questions for me, that's all I have.
No, I, I don't have any. Gentlemen?
I'm good.
All right, Commissioner comments. Uh, Commissioner Hayes, do you have any comments for tonight?
I have no more comments.
Commissioner Kavlish?
I have none.
I have none also. Uh, moving along, public concerns. We have, uh, one, uh, member from the public that would like to address the commission and, uh, Larry Walker, would you please come up to the podium? And this concerns, um, about, uh, a shotgun that was found. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Uh, I'm Larry Walker and, uh, retired from KDOT and I mow lawns now in the summertime. And I was mowing, uh, ladies backyard one day and, uh, I happened to look down in the bushes and, uh, in the weeds and I seen a shiny object and, uh, I reached down in there and, uh, picked up a shotgun. I had to dig it out of there and, uh, it was all rusted up and been there for quite a while. How long, I don't know. But anyway, I took the shotgun home and I cleaned it all up and, uh, tried to get all the rust off of it, cleaned the barrel out, I even went out and shot it. And I kept it for a couple of days and I got to thinking, you know, that could be somebody's shotgun. So I thought, well, I'm gonna turn it in to the police. Well, I turned it into the police and, uh, they, uh, come to find out and nobody had turned it in stolen. Wasn't a stolen gun or nothing. And so, you know, I asked, hey, can I have the gun back? And I don't think they want me to have the gun or, you know, they said you can't have the gun back, is what they said. But, uh, the police chief told me to come up, talk to y'all. And, uh, you know, the gun is not an assault rifle, it's not a pistol. It's a twelve-gauge shotgun and I feel since it ain't stolen or something, that I oughta get it back myself, you know, uh. I was good enough to, uh, give it to the police, you know, thinking, hey, if it's somebody's, you know, they'd love to have it back. You know, I'm honest, try to be honest about it.
Sure.
But, uh, I don't know, I, you know, I'd like, I feel I oughta get it back myself. So, uh, you know, like I say, it's not an assault rifle or a gun. And, you know, you could put, if I got it back, I could put the gun in my name. I'd never get rid of it and, uh, more likely I'd just, uh, give it to my grandkids, you know, later years. But, uh, I'd like to have the gun back if they don't find a rightful owner, you know, myself.
All right.
So that's about all I got to say, I guess.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Larry.
Yes. All right, with that, uh, that's the only public concern. We're moving to adjournment. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.